Note, there is a three-minute time limit.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Amador County Supervisor.
Your name, please?
I am Tamara Lopez, and I live in unincorporated Jackson. I am seeking to use property-assessed clean energy to upgrade my home-stated HVAC system. However, because the only PACE provider that was previously approved to operate in Amador County left the California market last year, I am currently unable to use PACE to finance this improvement. As a homeowner in Amador County, I have experienced the challenges brought by the extreme weather patterns of the last year: higher temperatures during the summer, severe storms during the winter, and rolling blackouts during the fire season. I have made some improvements to adapt to these challenges, including installing a whole-house backup generator, as well as installing a retaining wall from the January 2023 storm, which caused a mudslide on my property and a sinkhole in my driveway. I am now looking to replace the outdated HVAC system to be more efficient and effective, but would like to have an option that doesn't require large sums of cash or have a high interest rate. PACE is a solution for homeowners like me that gives consumers choice and equitable access to these vital home improvements with no money down and at a reasonable fixed interest rate. This is a much better option than other forms of equity-based financing that require large sums of capital or unsecured credit with high variable interest rates. I urge the board to opt-in to the California statewide community development agency's Open PACE program with a vote at a future meeting. Doing so will not only enable me to finance this project, but will also again give Amador County homeowners access to over 100 PACE-eligible improvements, ranging from drought-tolerant landscaping and fixtures, efficient roofing, insulation, and countless others. So, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
I thought we had joined the PACE program.
We did, and like she says, the Y-Green was the only one we had approved.
Right.
And they've left the market now.
Okay.
They're no longer, and so we don't have anybody that...
Are there other people?
There are others, yes. The concerns we had, I don't know if you all remember, but there were a number of folks who've come to the board complaining about lack of transparency when the agreements were made with the... She refers to the interest rate. The interest rate was rarely disclosed. I think there's been some changes in the laws, though. We can get back into it. But that was a concern that the board had when discussing it previously, that there were some predatory-type lenders out there that were...
Okay.
Well, and the company that was chosen had an individual or had a system where they could have a record of talking to the homeowners, and that's actually one of the complaints that came up. They were clearly informed of what happened, but they were an older couple that their relatives felt was... still felt they were misinformed and caused problems. So, it was... It's a good program for a lot of people. I think the CSCDA is a well-known agency, but we may still end up with those issues in the future.
If you want, we can bring it back for discussion at a future meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yes, come forward, sir.
Good morning, honorable members of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. My name is Gabe Holbert, and I represent Home Run Financing, a property-assessed clean energy administrator that finances energy efficiency, water conservation, and disaster resiliency home improvements for property owners voluntarily through their property taxes in over 325 California communities, including your neighbors of Sacramento, El Dorado, San Joaquin, and countless other incorporated cities, including I own. Thank you for your time this morning. California property owners are facing a crisis. As a result of historic drought, wildfires, and storms, homeowners face challenges of increasing insurance and energy costs in addition to public safety power shut-offs. Amador County is no stranger to this. As residents face these challenges, the demand for resiliency measures such as backup generators, solar panels, and efficient HVAC systems, among others, has increased despite these upgrades being out of reach for many due to high price tags and limited access to affordable financing to pay for them. PACE is a transformational public policy in place for over a decade that solves this problem. Unlike other traditional methods of financing that require large down payments and have high variable interest rates, PACE provides these improvements with no upfront cash required and at fixed interest rates and affordable rates that is then paid back through a special property tax assessment. All these benefits are offered with no taxpayer dollars or legal risk to the county. PACE delivers results not only for property owners, but also the small businesses that step up to complete these home improvements. As a result of PACE, over $2.71 billion of private capital has been invested in California's local economies, creating countless jobs and opportunities for those small businesses. Since AB 1284 was passed in 2018, the PACE industry has delivered best-in-class consumer protections, including rigorous underwriting standards, financial disclosures verifying the ability to pay, and a three-day right to cancel that's extended to five days for homeowners over 65. Amador County did have a PACE provider, the Y-Green Energy Fund, through the Golden State Financing Authority that the board voted to join in November 2017. However, last year, Y-Green left the California market, leaving your county with no PACE providers. The California statewide's community development authority, the CSCDA, which Amador County is already a member of, runs their Open PACE program with three providers, including Home Run Financing, in countless California communities. By passing a resolution to join the Open PACE program, you can enable Amador County homeowners to make their properties more resilient as they were with the previous PACE provider. Homeowners like Mrs. Lopez and her family would appreciate it if you direct your staff to bring this item for approval at your next board meeting. There is not a more beneficial program you can make available in your county that gives homeowners access to the financing they lost when your previous provider left. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. One thing I wanted to bring up was Volcano is having their Cannonball Run this Saturday. Anybody want to look at some nice cars and see a simple parade? Keys come on down. And then after that, Kirkwood is having their annual festival from 3:00 to 6:00 up at Kirkwood, and it'll be a nice hot day, so going up to Kirkwood might cool you off a little bit. Anything from the other board members?
Yeah, if you can make it through all the snow.
That's it. Okay. At 10:30, I will suspend the Board of Supervisors' meeting and start an in-home supportive services public authority of Amador County Board of Governors' meeting. We also need to add addendum number one, presentation of the report of the 2023/2022/2023 Amador County Grand Jury. We'll make that go from 1A to 3F and change the existing 3F to 3G. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we also need to add a consent addendum, code enforcement budget increase to cover additional revenue from the Cal Grant to 4BB. I was advised by Cindy Grahambois, had made a suggestion to allow public comment on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any comment on the consent agenda? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Call for a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Changes?
Second.
Call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Onto the regular agenda. 3A, California State Association of Counties, presentation by Mr. Graham Canos, CSAC Executive Director, noting regarding the at-home plan to put in place, assist counties in working with federal, state, and local partners in partnership with a governor and a legislator, implement a comprehensive plan to help those who are unhoused or at risk of becoming unhoused in the community. Sir! Good to see you.
I preempt you just for a second. Look, I thought we were going to have this on for action, for support by the board, and it shows this presentation only, so... So at this point, Greg, the board cannot take action on it?
Unless... Well, yes, unless it qualifies as sort of an emergency item, which I don't... I don't know that there's a time-sensitive...
So it'll have to be on a subsequent meeting or a special meeting to take action on it?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning.
Heather, you're going to help me, right?
Okay, awesome. Good morning. I'm Graham Canos. I'm the CEO of the California State Association of Counties. Good to be in your chambers and to see one of our past presidents and Supervisor Forster. He's been a leader with our organization for many years. I'm going to talk about at-home, our homelessness-related proposal. My colleague, Mark Newberger, will also provide an SB 1 update, transportation update, at your board's request as well, following my presentation. But we are in a very critical place on homelessness in the state of California. It's considered the number-one priority of the state, and it needs to be addressed like the number-one priority of the state at the state level. And so, we at CSAC, over the course of the past year, have done a substantial amount of work, bringing together recommendations from all counties about things that are working, things that are not working, barriers to further progress, what the specific roles of the state, counties, and cities should be in order to have success around homelessness. Next slide, please. And what we learned is something incredibly basic, which is, there is no system, no real system, to address homelessness in the state of California. There are not clearly defined responsibilities about who's supposed to do what. There is no ongoing funding from the state in order to fund progress on homelessness. And those things must change in order for the state to be able to hold counties and cities accountable for results around homelessness. That's where our plan started from. And so, there's a need for additional accountability around homelessness and clearly defined responsibilities for folks. What we have done... You can stay on... Go back, please. Or, I'm sorry, go ahead. Right there. Perfect. Okay. What we have done is to create what we believe is the first comprehensive plan to address homelessness. The unique thing about it is defining responsibilities for all levels of government, which means it's not just counties that have responsibilities around homelessness. It must also be cities. It must also be the state in order to make progress, should the state desire to do so. And so, through working with our colleagues at the Urban Counties of California, the Rural County Representatives of California, who are also here in the room, and the broad county family, half a dozen county administrators, a number of supervisors to serve as a political and policy sounding board, and rural, suburban, and urban county staff all across the state, we developed at-home, which is about accountability, transparency, housing, outreach, mitigation, and economic opportunity. And I will briefly touch on each of those and then focus more specifically on the accountability portion, because that's what we've been most heavily advocating for in the state budget. Ultimately, accountability is about clearly defined responsibilities for all levels of government aligned to state funding and expectations. That needs to be put in place. Transparency is about data, having clarity about what works and what doesn't work, so that we can make course corrections as appropriate. Housing, in this case, is about shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Outreach is about two different things. One, the emergency response system when someone falls into homelessness. And then, two, ensuring that there's a sufficient workforce to deliver the services. We have a severe shortage of both behavioral health and social workers in California, in both the public and private sectors, and that needs to be addressed as we move through this. Mitigation is about the county health and human services responsibilities, primarily but not exclusively around behavioral health, but ensuring that there's a robust safety net system for what you do on behalf of the state and federal government. And then finally, economic opportunity, which is about pathways out of homelessness, pathways out of poverty. Next slide, please. So, what we have done is, we have this comprehensive plan. It has dozens and dozens of policy recommendations, and we are focusing first and foremost on the accountability pillar itself, because until there are clear responsibilities about who's supposed to do what and how it is funded, it's really hard to hold anyone accountable for making progress around homelessness. So, we start there. Accountability, we believe, is about having one countywide plan, have dollars flow through that plan, clear responsibilities for counties and for cities. Next slide, please. And I'm going to get specific here for just a second. What we're recommending is that cities in incorporated areas would be... In their incorporated areas would be responsible for siting, doing the administrative operations of shelters and transitional housing, siting, permanent supportive housing, and doing encampment, cleanup, and sanitation. Counties would be responsible for all those same things in your unincorporated area, and in addition, throughout the county, responsible for all the health and human services with the prioritization on the homelessness population. For encampment outreach, we leave that open, because it varies from community to community in terms of who is best positioned to do that. In some cases, it's the county. In some cases, it's the city. In the case of Sacramento, it's actually the health plan that serves in that role, and so that makes far more sense to leave locally in order to do that. But clarifying these core responsibilities and having them directly aligned to the funding that comes from the state in order to accomplish these goals. Next slide, please. Okay. So, once there are clear responsibilities, there needs to be ongoing funding in order to accomplish it. We cannot make ongoing progress on homelessness with one-time money. There must be ongoing funding from the state if there's an expectation of ongoing progress from the state. And so, we are calling for that very thing around this issue. We believe the dollars should be aligned to who's doing what. And so, if the county's doing half of the work, you should receive half of the funding. If it's your local continuum of care that is doing half the work, then they should receive half of the funding, but that it would all flow through the county as the fiscal agent and through a unified plan that you would be creating locally. So that is the structure that would be put in place. Relevant for Amador is that there needs to be a sizable minimum county amount to recognize scale in the cost of entry for a number of facilities that you may need to be... You may need to be put in place in terms of your community. And so, that is a very important factor. Flexibility is also an incredibly important factor to ensure that the state's role is limited to defining what we're trying to accomplish and who should do the work, and the way in which that's done, the how part, is then determined locally. That's local government. You all should have the tools, the authority, and the resources to navigate through how to accomplish whatever the priority is in your community, and that should be no different around homelessness. We're also recommending a performance-based model where there are some funds set aside such that when you reach your goals ahead of time, that you are rewarded for doing so. Currently, we have a system that works in reverse of that. In the case of Monterey, they reduced their point-in-time count by 15% year-over-year. That's awesome. We should all celebrate. And as a direct result, they lost $1.7 million, and some of the solutions they put in place are now being eroded, because the system is not based to encourage success, and we need to change that in the way that we operate here. Next slide, please. Ultimately, we are building a very broad coalition around these accountability proposals that I referenced. We have crafted statutory language that we've been pushing with the governor and the legislature around these issues, and we currently have 35 counties that have formally endorsed at-home with a number of others that are in process of doing so. There are a couple of continuums of care, the California Chamber of Commerce, the Sierra Business Council, the Economic Roundtable, and on and on and on. There's a very, very broad coalition that is being built around this, and it's being built for one simple reason, which is that many communities, large and small, are frustrated that there's not more progress being made around homelessness, and that needs to change. And the way to make change is to do something that is more significant, to function in a different way, to clarify who's responsible for what as we move through this. And so, that's exactly what we are attempting to do as a broad county family. Next slide, please. So, I want to... So, our ask of this board at the right moment in your schedule is to consider endorsing at-home so that we can continue to grow that coalition and put pressure on the state for that clarity and for that ongoing commitment of funding from them. I want to shift gears for just a moment to touch on something that is a significant political issue this year that is being discussed at the state level, and it's related to the Mental Health Services Act, otherwise known as Proposition 63, and a modernization proposal from the governor. Both the issue that I just addressed and also this MHSA issue are incorporated into the state budget agreement that was just arrived at late last night, about 9:00 o'clock last night, and so it's relevant for what may be happening this coming year. What this MHSA proposal would do is, there are some positive things and some not-so-positive things around it. It is slated to go to the ballot in March of next year, and there are two components to it. One of them is a bond. It's a behavioral health and veterans' housing-related bond of about $4.7 billion, and so that would go to the voters. Linked to that would be changes to how the Mental Health Services Act operates, and those changes would include greater flexibility, so that's a positive. We support that, for sure. Expanding the population to be served to those that are severely impacted by substance use, and so that is also a recommendation that we support in terms of going through this. But there's a sticker shock problem of the state also proposing to redirect $1 billion of your existing funding. Take it out of the left pocket, put it back into the right pocket, call it new money. We all know it's not actually new money, but to redirect some of the existing dollars to focus on behavioral health housing on an ongoing basis. So, having funding focused on behavioral health housing on an ongoing basis is a good thing, but having to unravel existing services that are keeping populations from declining in their mental illness is not the way to do it. And so, we're strongly opposed to that portion of this proposal. So, that is out there. Happy to address any questions about that, and certainly happy to address any questions about the at-home proposal, or frankly, anything else related to the state budget, since it is just on the cusp of the legislature voting on it over the next 72 hours.
So, Mr. Chairman, back to you. Supervisor X?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, when you talk about one countywide plan, is that something we would actually put together? Is that what you're referring to, a document? Or is that just you're speaking figuratively on that?
So, I am speaking literally on that. Currently, in order to access what are known as the HAP dollars, the state homelessness dollars, each county or region, if you combine your efforts with some of your neighbors, each county's required to submit a plan, and so we're simply referencing continuing to do so, but instead of doing it on a one-year basis, to do it on a three-year basis. The amount of work between those two things is not all that different, so you should be able to do it one time for three years, so there's just a longer window to make investments and change linked to the funding.
So, yeah, we actually put together a 10-year plan, but...
Even better.
Paid with, I believe, mental health MHSA funding. So, and then we've had a continuum of care. We have four member counties, and in the past, the funding was based on point-in-time count. Several of the counties hadn't performed that, so that kind of put us at a loss. I think that's been corrected. You know, if the county's the fiscal agent, what is our... What tools do we have to make sure that we can achieve our goals? Because we have five incorporated cities within our county, and some feel like the problem is not theirs. And, you know, that's where a lot of the services are for things to take place, and we need a mechanism to work all of that, and it's been kind of difficult. So, are there any tools in this plan?
It's a very real challenge across the state, certainly Supervisor X. The way this plan would be structured, it'd be a stakeholder process that the county's likely familiar with, similar to what's done on MHSA. Cities that want to engage would do so. Continuum of care, same thing. And then the dollars would go out based upon who's carrying out what level of responsibility. And so, if there's an entity that says, "We're out. We don't want to participate," then they receive no funding attached to that.
Well, I mean, most of them are probably pretty happy with that. They don't care. That's a problem, because that's where a lot of the services are. So, if you want, like, affordable housing or supportive housing built, it's most likely going to occur there, not in the county, not in the unincorporated area. Although, we are looking at an area, and we're developing a specific plan for that. But, you know, there are resources that are really scarce here. Water and wastewater are a real issue, and, you know, we can't just have a large septic system for apartments and things like that, so...
That is exactly right. And so, what we're proposing is that there would be a unified plan that would be created locally, and you would scale up or down depending upon the level of state investment. And so, if the state continues... Currently, it's about $1 billion. If the state continues funding $1 billion, then they could expect about $1 billion worth of outcomes based upon the compilation of all the plans in the state. If they invest $10 billion, then there should be dramatically more outcomes. If they invest zero, then you are responsible to do zero. And so, we're trying to align the two things together. There are separate... There are separate state interests relative to the cities and housing that are not part of what we are proposing, but certainly get at some of the affordable housing-related issues that may exist in communities, at least from a zoning perspective and housing elements.
As you're talking about this, and Supervisor X brought it up, you know, part of our problem for low-income housing is our infrastructure, as water and wastewater. As you say, the system may be flexible. Is it going to be able to assist us in that aspect? You know, because we have a project that we're trying to get on its feet, but our infrastructure is putting it behind the power curve, and so that's one of the things that, as a county, we're kind of having problems with.
Yes. So, what we're proposing, specific on homelessness, would not directly address sewer-type of infrastructure that you're referring to. There certainly are potential avenues in terms of what may be available federally over the course of the next couple of years from dollars from the Infrastructure Act and the Inflation Reduction Act, and some of the ARPA-related dollars that are out there. There are some avenues, but you are absolutely right that there are significant challenges, particularly in smaller communities around that infrastructure, and those barriers can prevent forward progress even when there's interest in moving ahead on some of those, so that problem doesn't get solved.
Because we have a shovel-ready project, and, you know, we're held up, you know, so that's part of our problem.
We would certainly be interested, separate from our homelessness proposal, but certainly be interested in the infrastructure needs of this county and how we can best work together. be interested in the infrastructure needs of this county and how we can best work together to advance those. We have created a grants-based initiative that is intended to help access some of those federal dollars. And so it's run, actually, by my colleague, Paul Dancheck, who's a resident of your county but runs our foundation now. And so that grants initiative is about leveraging available federal dollars for infrastructure and for other things that may be a priority, and doing some of the analysis around what the cost of admission may be in order to access some of those grant dollars. Are there mass requirements that are a barrier to overcome? Or are there not? Actually, there are more grant dollars federally available today that are more flexible than perhaps at any time in the past twenty years. That's a positive for communities, but often, communities don't have the internal capacity to seek them out and to put them in place. You actually may be better positioned as a county than most around that particular issue, but we're happy to engage in that conversation as well.
Thank you. Go ahead. Supervisor Forster?
Yeah, the redirection behavioral health, we always need more money there, so that's applauded. But then you take away that applause by stealing that money from mental health services, which affects most of the homeless population in one way or the other. So that combined, the state again, trying to go a direction that's adverse to what we feel is the biggest benefit for our county. And then, with what's going on with IHSS right now with the state, where is that money going to come from? That's money that's got to be pulled from mental health services or from other money that comes from the state. So are they a little uncoordinated in their activities with some of these moves that they're making?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you can expand on that. Can we... What can we do to change this? Because some of these items, some of these issues are going to be on the ballot already. So is the only avenue now is to go against the measure on the ballot, I guess?
So we're having active conversation with the governor and the legislature around these very issues. We have a very different perspective as to the appropriateness of redirecting existing dollars for a new purpose while expanding expectations about what you're already doing. Those two things are not compatible, and so it does create some challenge. The intent of putting something on the March ballot of next year means that our opportunity to weigh in on this is between now and the end of the legislative session. So it's a relatively short window, and there'll be a big chunk of that that folks are seeking to tackle this week as part of the overall state budget. That's challenging. There is absolutely room for a more comprehensive and thoughtful, broad approach around all the issues that touch homelessness at the state level. And the conversation is happening. There's movement. It's just slower than I think we would like it to be. And so we're continuing to push. This is where your assistance with at-home comes into play and is relevant. And hearing your voice from your county on MHSA becomes very important, so that we can leverage that together as we're lobbying in Sacramento on your behalf.
Is the administration dead-set on going with this measure on the ballot, though, at this point?
Yes.
Or can they be changed? They've had this idea for quite a while now.
There will... It is incredibly likely that on the March ballot of next year, there will both be a behavioral health housing bond and there'll be a Mental Health Services Act modernization proposal. Both things are incredibly likely to be on the ballot. There's less concern and detail issue related to the behavioral health and veterans' housing bond, but there's a lot related to the Mental Health Services Act. And so there will be a product. We want to impact that product so that it provides the greatest amount of flexibility for communities and does not increase expectations while redirecting your existing dollars in the process. And that is a tall mountain to climb, because there is significant interest on the part of the state, or at least on the part of the governor's office, to redirect those dollars currently.
Can you clarify that if there's something on the ballot on mental health services, what's the intent, to ask for more tax dollars?
It is... It's not intended... There's been no conversation or interest expressed in increasing the tax around Mental Health Services Act, but rather just reconfiguring how the dollars are utilized. And so currently, there are... It is an incredibly complicated structure that often makes it difficult to invest the dollars in communities. And so many counties and communities struggle to fully utilize the dollars that are there because the rules are very complex. Some of what's being proposed would address that by having fewer pots of dollars with incredibly specific requirements. And so your hands... You'd have a little more flexibility as a board. That's awesome. But... And there's no interest in increasing the tax as part of that overall measure. There is this billion-dollar redirection problem, though.
I'm going to withhold my last question, because I'm going to let our General Services Director bring it up, since he's already sent me something on it, so...
Did you have a... Yeah, I would like to get a word in. One thing, too, if you're always in conversation with the state, I'd like to see you maybe bring a little bit different tack to this deal. It's obvious we have a mental health homeless problem. I mean, anybody has half a brain, and our eyeball can see it. But I think you can throw money at it. Until you sink the ship, it's not going to change it. We did a county cleanup a while back, homeless encampment. We offered every service available. Hey, what do you want? Except for one lady, they all said, "We don't want nothing." They were happy where they were, doing what they're doing. On a personal note, I got a place over by Forest Hill. Went back to do cleanup number... I think it's number three. Kind of... It's way out in the middle of nowhere. It's where all the people, the issues go, it seems like. We go and clean it up, and they mess it up. It's like two and a half hours to get there. So I went and told camp survivors, I said, "Hey, we're cleaning up our property. Anything out of this enormous pile of junk, trailer houses and garbage left here? Anything you want, please come get it. Bless I got to move." "No, man, we don't want nothing." "Okay, thank you." Well, a garbage company didn't bring a dumpster like they're supposed to, so we're going, "How are we going to clean this place up? We don't have a dumpster." You know, we'll take one of those old trailer houses, we'll make it into a dumpster, and we'll haul it to the dump. So we took about thirty-five-foot trailer house, and we stuffed it full of everything you can imagine. Two days later, my son comes and says, "Hey, Dad, one of the trailer houses, it's gone." I'm talking a pile of garbage. And the trailer house, full of garbage. I'm like, "No, it can't be gone." So I looked, and my gosh, it was gone. So where it went and what they did with it, God only knows. But the point I'm trying to make is, who in their right mind would take a trailer house thirty-five-foot long, plumb full of garbage, and take it somewhere? So it's not like we're dealing... All these people are not always all rational. It's like, we offer them services, they wanted nothing. It's quite a while back. I went to our homeless shelter. It's been a while. I says, "I imagine you're probably full up." "Oh, no, they had vacancies." I said, "Really? Well, why is that?" "They don't want to follow rules." So as far as trying to get it with money, I think that may be a hard thing. And then I talked to a gentleman who goes all around the state, kind of like you folks do. He's a lobbyist for a big company. I asked him, I say, "What do you see with this homeless deal?" I said, "What's the solution? Have you ever seen something?" He said, "Brian, I've been a hundred meetings, I've been the one." He said, "Best I can tell, you need to start when they're young." We have kids, you know, coming through our schools, getting into drugs, getting into issues. Next thing you know, they can't cope with society, and they're out of society. And I guess where I'm going with this is, we're doing a lot of social engineering in our schools. We should get back to teaching these children to read, to write, to do arithmetic, and bring back some of our old-school values we used to have. We had some homeless people years back, but not this epidemic we have now. So, I mean, I understand what you're trying to address. All I'm saying, the root cause of the problem is where we need to be focused at some point, too. Otherwise, we can address homeless, and it's going to be revolving door, and it's going to just keep going and going and going. So I know it's off-tack a little bit, but it's something to consider when you're talking to the governor and those people, saying, "Hey, how about... Let's look at what we did in the past, and we seem to have better results than what we're doing now." But we do have a lot better drugs. I mean, you get stuff now, some of the stuff, you take a few times and you're hooked. So, I mean, it's a little bit different than, I guess, the dope they smoked back in the sixties.
Supervisor Neto, I can't comment on that, but what I can comment on is that, to one of your early points, which is continuing to cut checks and throw money at a problem when it's not even clear who's supposed to do what, is not a good course, and it leads to a waste of taxpayer dollars. And I know that is absolutely not the intent of this county or nearly any other county in the state, and that's true of most communities. So until we have a clear system of defined responsibilities, first, with an ongoing state commitment, there is no question that we will continue to fail. And I would say, submit to this board, that that is a choice at the state level, and we're asking for them to make a different choice, which hopefully puts in place and empowers local communities while the state fulfills its role of defining the what and the who, and then getting out of the way so that you all can do things in a way that makes sense in your community. Ultimately, that's what we're seeking to put in place.
Supervisor Crew, anything?
Yes, sir. Just maybe a comment as much as a question. We border Sacramento County, and our news comes out of Sacramento, and there's a... In its embryonic stage of the county of Sacramento and the city of Sacramento, trying to do... I'm thinking what you're talking about. Is that kind of part of the pilot program for this at-home? They don't mention the state so much. They're just trying to... The city and the county kind of run together in who's, you know, who's determining what to do. Do you think that's going to be a success, or is that running counter to what your plan is?
It's consistent. County Sacramento has endorsed this plan, as have a number of your name... I was in Twalome last week. They've endorsed it. Placer County has as well. It's consistent. What we're suggesting is that the responsibilities that I outlined here in terms of accountability, that that would be the default. And then, if a community determines locally that it should be something different, that cities should be doing something a little bit different, and the county should be doing something a little bit different, then whatever they agree to locally, that stands. And so, for example, in the case of Sacramento County and city, the health plan has a more significant role in some of this work than the county and the city do. And that's awesome. They were able to work that out. The problem, and you hit on it, the problem with what they've created locally is that the state is nowhere to be seen. And so you can... There's only so much you can do locally on an issue of statewide significance when the state is not in the room and not part of the ongoing MOU that they have put in place. And so that part needs to change. So it's taking what Sacramento County and city have put together, and what Stanislas County and the city of Modesto have put together, and San Diego County and San Diego City have put together, and it is adding the state into the mix, so it's not just left to local government to just figure it out. The state has an overarching role and responsibility to be part of this solution, too, and that's not happening on an ongoing basis, and it needs to. And so that's where the push is coming from.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know my colleague, Mark Newberger, is going to follow me to provide an update on SB1 at the request of your board, so let me get out of your way. I hope you all have a great day. It's good to be in Amador.
Thank you.
Can you take some public comment on this, because I think Mr. Hopkins would like to say something? Come on up, John. Well, you did the... You were out with the... Your department was involved with the unhoused.
Well, not just that one endeavor. We've been doing it for years. But as you guys all have said, and Graham alluded to, the state's throwing money at housing, and there's problems with that because they're not dealing with the fact that... I mean, I don't know if you've been to a housing encampment and actually ever talked to any of these folks, or had the duty to remove them. But they don't want the services, primarily. I interviewed a total of probably thirty people over the last probably five years. And whether it was reunification services or sheltering services, mental health services or drug and alcohol services, they all declined those services. The other problem that I think the state has is that they're throwing money at housing, and I don't think they... The cost of that housing is significant, and significant to where low-income or moderate-income people are taking a look at that and saying, "How come you're not building that for me?" Right? So they have that problem as well. But until you deal with... And it's always been a bad idea. Any time you're going to collect people and force them into an area, that's a problem by itself, right? That doesn't work out well. So these experiences that I've had here at our local level, throwing money at housing, I think you've got some other hurdles that need to be overcome first before you do that. But that's just my experience. Everything else, I mean, we all know where we stand, and Graham does, too. So I think they're trying to make an effort, at least with the state, not to do this, right? And play that shell game. That hurts us as well.
Well, there was a recent study that was just published by UCSF. They did work, and housing is definitely at the top of the list. I mean, it's crushing people. I just had a conversation with my niece two weekends ago, and her and her husband, they have good jobs and everything. They live in the Bay Area. They can't afford a house. I mean, it's, you know, where they live, it's, you know, over a million dollars for housing. You know, a lot of this is due to the tech industry. They've brought in a lot of people, big salaries. It's a boon for the state, but it's also a... You know, it's a... There's a downside to that as well.
When you have these bigger issues...
A lot of the people are getting displaced, you know, because of that. They just can't afford housing. The average age, median age, is in the forties and fifties.
Right.
These are people that used to be able to get by on a minimum-wage job or a lower-income job, and that's why people are also leaving the state. They just simply can't afford to live here on the lower end.
I think it was probably seven years ago, I met with GoBiz Derek, and I mentioned to him, and the state has finally realized this, SEQA is a challenge with this, and SEQA's a challenge with the infrastructure. There's a whole host of problems with developing housing that you guys have talked about here today that I just think they got the cart before the horse. And to move money around like they're talking about, I think is a bad idea. I would agree with Graham on that. So however you want to proceed, but it's a big fish to try to tackle, as you guys know.
Well, being you brought up housing, it's interesting, too, because, not against immigration, but if you bring in millions of people, they got to live somewhere. And if you're not building millions of houses, you've got a shortage, just on that alone. And you look at the building code, it keeps getting more complex. I think now they're requiring solar in houses. Not a bad thing, but the price of that house just went up. And you look at what people used to live in years ago, some were tarpaper shacks, but they had a house. And now, you can't build a tarpaper shack. Go build a house anymore. You're talking big money. I'm hearing three hundred bucks a square foot, just average house around here down Bay Area, you're probably talking up six hundred bucks a square foot, maybe sometimes more. Yeah, those numbers up.
You've got to have people manage these properties as well. You've got the NIMBY issues. I mean, there's all these issues that go along with homelessness that I just... Throwing money at building housing, I think some of these other problems need to be addressed first. Mental health is a big deal. Anyway...
I don't think it's the mental health. I think it's they don't have a house, because they can't afford it. You know, you look at the house in Palo Alto. When I lived there, it was $750,000. That was a lot of money back then. That was late eighties, early nineties. You can't touch anything for less than five million.
Wow.
Okay? That's...
Cost is there, but the mental health issue is there as well.
No. Well, you know, when you can't afford housing and you can't keep a job, that's what happens. And most of these people, they're not coming here from other states. That's what they're saying in the study. They grew up here. They lived here. And most of these people, they're not coming here from other states. That's what they're saying in the study. They grew up here. They lived here. So.
Graham, what do you do? I mean, John's brought it up, Supervisor Renato's brought it up, that when they go out to do pit counts or when they go out to remove people, most of them, a lot of them, I'm not gonna say most, but a lot of them do not want stable housing. They, they, they're comfortable, or they like their lifestyles, and don't want that changed. You can't force them. They're, if they don't show signs of mental illness where the county needs to take them under conservatorship, what do we do then, to make this plan work?
There, so some of that is evolving in law with the Care Court pilot that your neighbor Toolumee is one of the pilot counties in. That is, it's not forced. Um, it is, perhaps it's leveraged.
You mean the, the plan where county could face criminal penalties?
No, it's not, it's not criminal-related penalties. What it is, it is about leveraging the court system to encourage treatment effectively.
But Care Court could bind the county and put penalties on the county if, if we don't, uh, come into compliance. Isn't that the way it's set up?
There are, uh, I'm, I'm not sure that that is, that is the case, but there are, currently, it's not sufficiently funded, which is a different issue, but a real one nonetheless. Uh, this is, I mean, there's no question homelessness is an incredibly complex issue. It's the last thing I worked on when I was in Placer County before I came to CSAC. And it is, um, and did experience some of the challenges of those who did not want treatment, did not want housing. And that's real. That's real in probably every community in the state. And at the same time that most individuals, often in the eighty-five to ninety-five percent range, who are homeless in the community actually grew up in that very community as well. And so, there's, um, which is helpful to understand from a policy perspective and a service perspective, how, how best to, to navigate forward. It's incredibly complex. There are, we do have some recommendations that are around SEQA as well to, um, to lower the, uh, lower the barrier there for a number of critical facilities, because it is, uh, overused and often abused for a purpose that has no connection to what the original intent was of the act. And so, we're, we are seeking that as well. That's part of this overall, um, at-home plan, at least in terms of the housing pillar that's attached to that. So, there's, there are many, many dozens of policy recommendations that we believe are needed. And we're proposing a whole host of them, and I have no doubt that there are a number of others beyond that that, um, folks with good intent are proposing as well. It takes all of that.
And SEQA is a huge issue. I mean, it's, it's, I remember years ago, I thought they'd address it, because I think somebody wanted to build some big stadium. I thought, aha, they're gonna have to address SEQA, it's killing them. And I remember they went ahead to legislature, passed an exemption to SEQA for that project. I thought, oh, we're, we're done, because they can exempt themselves, then they don't have to worry about us. And they, they wouldn't change it. And it's been a lot of years, and that, maybe now they're going to, but I know our jail project, it cost us years of delay, just one person suing us in SEQA, a real facetious reason. And they went through court, and then had appeals in court, and it cost the county millions of dollars in, um, additional costs. And, and the, and the, a whole SEQA challenge was, was just bunk. But the way it's set up, they can do it. So, it needs to be changed.
Well, thank you, Graham. Why don't we have Mark come on up, and we'll have public comment?
Thanks all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning. Mark Newberger, Legislative Advocate with the State Association of Counties on housing, land use, and transportation issues. Thank you very much for the invitation to present to the board on SB one. In particular, the portions of the act that provide additional funding to counties that dedicates resources to transportation. So, for back, um, for just a quick overview, I'll be covering some background on SB one and basic information on it. Then I'll focus on the local partnership program in particular, which provides additional resources to county that meets, counties that meet certain criteria. Finally, I'll touch on a few items to consider when pursuing any efforts to meet the local partnership program's criteria for eligibility. So, SB one is actually officially known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act. The act increased and created new fuels and vehicle registration-based taxes and fees to provide approximately five point four billion dollars annually for transportation funding in the states. For counties, SB one, uh, is estimated or typically provides approximately seven hundred and fifty million dollars to county roads annually. And that's direct money in, in a kind of a formula-based, uh, system that's proportional to a lot of different things, like your road, population, and things along those lines. For counties that meet specific eligibility criteria, the local partnership program provides approximately a hundred million dollars annually. And then finally, SB one created a variety of reporting and data submission requirements for state and local governments that receive funding from the act to provide an amount of transparency and accountability. So, timing-wise, timing-wise, SB one is passed in the middle, in, uh, mid-two thousand seventeen, and many of its provisions went into effect immediately. However, almost as soon as the act is passed, it's challenged by a referendum. This referendum becomes known as Prop Six, which sought to repeal just the increased taxes and fees associated with SB one. Ultimately, Prop Six failed, but I will note that many local governments and counties in particular slowed down their plans to use Prop Six funding during this early period for fear that they would potentially approve projects that relied on funding that may not materialize depending on how the referendum turned out. But since the, the, since Prop Six failed, um, there's been continual spending. As of year-to-date, approximately fourteen billion dollars of SB one funding has been spent. Of this amount, counties have received about three point two billion dollars, uh, counties and cities have received about three point two billion dollars for their road projects. And Amador County has received approximately nine point four million dollars directly from SB one funds in the form of the Local Streets and Roads Program. So, now on to the local partnership program, which is administered by the California Transportation Commission. So, a little information on the program. Um, it provides money to eligible local governments for transportation purposes. To qualify, the local government must have a voter-approved tax measure with proceeds that are dedicated solely to transportation purposes. This program allocates approximately a hundred million dollars annually over to your project cycle. A sixty percent by revenue and population formula, forty percent by a competitive grant formula whereby you advance a project and then compete with other jurisdictions that are eligible to see who's gonna win. The CTC ultimately approves the projects, and they approve both the formula projects and the competitive grant proj, projects. And of course, if your project is selected, then it comes with reporting requirements. So, there's some high-level fine print that comes with something like the local partnership program. To qualify, the local government must have a tax measure in place that is a minimum of a quarter cent, dedicates all of its revenues to transportation purposes, and lasts at least ten years. Uh, I do want to focus on the transportation purposes piece, because there have been jurisdictions with advanced aid tax increment financing that had roads, schools, stormwater, and they were found to later be not eligible because it had to be solely dedicated to transportation purposes. The formula amounts are based on, uh, kind of two factors, primarily population, and then also tax revenues on a dollar-for-dollar basis. But the minimum guarantee amount is two hundred.
When you say tax revenues, you're talking about sales tax revenues?
Whatever tax revenues you're talking about. Typically, sales tax revenues are the most popular. Jurisdictions sometimes choose parcel. There's a different variety. But whatever the revenue total is, it is a dollar-for-dollar match, uh, requirement, or not match, but requirement.
So, who chooses that? Who chooses the sales tax revenues to look at for the formula?
Would this, if, for example, in a hypothetical, that it's a quarter cent sales tax dedicated solely to transportation, the amount that that raises.
So, it's based on that, that revenue that you're bringing in?
Correct.
So, it's not, has nothing to do with property tax or anything like that? Okay, good.
No, no, not unless you, the measure dedicates property, whatever it's raising, if it's property tax, then it looks at property tax. But it looks solely at the revenues generated by whatever measure is voter-approved to, and dedicated to transportation. A, a typical part that is also in the fine print is that it requires a local match, that the local partnership program requires a match dependent on how much revenues are raised. So, if your local, whatever the tax revenue is, is over a million dollars, it's a hundred percent. But if it's under two million dollars, it's twenty-five percent. This, of course, becomes kind of an issue on local match pieces, so it's, it's kind of a thing to consider. Because if they're gonna give you a dollar, they want to see you matching a dollar. And this is very consistent from federal to state projects, and even regional, kind of, local, local government projects, that there's always a local match considered or required.
Well, even if, if we did a half-cent sales tax, you know, we're only looking, we're looking at under two million dollars for the unincorporated section of this county, because we are so small.
Precisely. And then the match would be dropped down to twenty-five percent. So, in a hypothetical, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar project that you're relying on local partnership program, uh, dollar, excuse me. If it's a two hundred fifty thousand dollar project, you get two hundred million from the, two hundred thousand, excuse me, from the local partnership program, it would be expecting a fifty thousand dollar local match from whatever funds, from whatever funds you're going to allocate. SB one formula funds, uh, the Local Streets and Roads Program would be an eligible source as well. So, many do exactly that. They are able to draw from the local partnership program, and they dedicate their SB one Local Streets and Roads Formula funding that received from the controllers to make the match. A few items to weigh, based on, uh, these are just kind of the five-year averages for any of the local government considering the local, um, partnership programs that are relevant to Amador County. The first data, this is just your five-year average of sales tax distribution, compares the county and then your five cities, and this is just the average. So, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. Three point four million is about what your county draws in. Three hundred fifty thousand, a little bit over, is what your five cities have been averaging the past five years. Population's pretty straightforward. Over half your populations in unincorporated counties. And then the road miles, and this is just road miles, not lane miles. This is just center line, doesn't include multilane. Four hundred and ten in the county, sixty-one in the city. And that is it for my presentation. Are there any particular questions?
Yeah, I think what's, the reason why I've contacted you in the past, and why I wanted you to speak before this body and be on the record with other jurisdictions. We have five cities and then the county. And the question was, could the individual cities, which are their own jurisdiction, run their own sales tax and apply for this funding and come out ahead and do better than if we collectively went together as, as one entity? Because we either need to go as the county and the five cities together, or we, we all have to go individually. And the feeling was, they could each get a hundred thousand dollars, which for some of these smaller cities, that would be a lot more than they, they could ever raise from a half-cent sales tax within their jurisdiction. So, can we dispel this notion here that this is a good idea?
I would put it like this. Of course, you know, everybody likes, you know, a lot of their control locally. I will say, as far as transportation projects go, your average transportation, just a resurfacing of a street for a mile is about, your public works director can correct me, but about three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars, depending. So, a two hundred thousand dollar program is notable. However, there's a resource piece of that too, in that it would first require the city to approve that, and then it's kind of back to the, to the kind of slide on the, on the tax base, what it can raise. It's a question of how much can it raise over that period of time, and is it meaningful? And on top of it too, yes, everyone likes about two hundred thousand dollars, and what would be considered easy money, perhaps. But there are, there's a local match requirement, there's reporting requirements. There's essentially a lot of requirements on top of that that in the past, I think, a lot of folks have experienced with federal grants, that while there's a lot of upfront money available, there are a lot of kind of reporting and other requirements that may not be perceived as worth the effort, considering how long it takes, for example, a tax measure to raise enough revenue to be used or even bonded against to actually do one single project. And that, that's especially relevant, the smaller the tax base you go. I'm always, um, typically more of a, one to think, well, kind of on a larger regional scale, in order to deliver benefits on the projects in a timely manner that's relevant to folks, instead of putting something on the ballot, waiting a decade, having the money, getting, doing the project, and the time it's actually delivered, the, the voters have long forgotten what the tax was actually for and what it contributed to, and where the projects, what project it did.
Uh, I brought up with our Caltrans District Ten Director in a meeting, I said this during a meeting, and I guess he got very excited and wanted a meeting with me and our, our ACTC Transportation Director. That Caltrans, we, we need to relook at SB one at the distribution of dollars. So, he got real excited. So, I asked him in our meeting, how many dollars short are you? And he felt, well, we get about eighty million a year. He said, Caltrans, we're getting about fifty percent of what we need. So, then I told him, previous studies we've done show we're getting about a third of what we need, to prove the point. That being said, I don't think SB one's ever gonna be looked at again, because now we're looking at pay per mile. So, and talk about running a measure, is it still relevant? Because they're talking about having a, converting our tax system to pay per mile, drive per mile, within the next ten years. So, can you address some of those points? Is it the relevancy of running a measure, would it still be worth it? Knowing that this system will probably be converted, because what was said at a CSAC meeting was that once the state adopts the pay-per-mile, the tax at the pump would go away, this tax.
So, the, the bottom line is a self, well, any sort of local measure that, that dedicates, that raises local funding and dedicated specifically to transportation is called self-help. Any self-help measure providing more resources to transportation is, as long as it meets your criteria, a good idea. Because that provides more resources dedicated solely to transportation, and viewed from a statewide or even a regional level, that's viewed as a positive, it's contributing the match.
That's based on the SB one formula, though, and the self-help measure that's built into SB one. So, what happens if SB one, would it go away if a pay-per-mile tax was implemented?
As far as the, it's, the, the SB one is a lot about, kind of, is the revenues dedicated. And I think what you're touching on is a kind of a more global problem. Most of the state's transportation funding is based on a fuels-based, how much fuel, diesel, gas that we consume. There's a small part of it that's just a transportation improvement fee that's a vehicle registration-based. The likely long-term is that fuel-based taxes are gonna continue to decline for a variety of reasons. Primarily, a lot of folks switching from gasoline, power vehicles to electric would be the, the prime one. The elements of SB one, as far as the programs sought, the programs that the money flows to have been around for a while and continue to be around. I think what will, is a likely outcome, is that the actual revenues-based, we're talking about the fuels-based revenues will decline or at least be swapped out generally. That's the idea behind the, the pay-per-mile, is that, as, and this is coming from Caltrans themselves with all the research they're doing, especially in rural areas, that would be, be adjusted to be net zero, that if the pay-per-mile and other means of raising transfer, uh, revenues for transportation, as that goes, as those revenues goes up, gas is adjusted down. And of course, there's that kind of difficult spot too, that as consumption goes down, you have issues where what is the actual rate? What is it producing the revenue? But I think the elements to your specific point of a self-help tax measure based on a local partnership program is a good idea, and that the elements of the local partnership program will continue because of its success, and because of the state level and kind of regional level desire to show, hey, here's a local match, we're dedicated, we're committed to providing specific resources for transportation. That will stay. So, basing a local measure on that is a solid bet.
I hope so. Thank you.
Supervisor Crew?
Nothing from me.
Supervisor Renato?
Yeah, um, I know it'd come up once, and we, I think Supervisor actually got a, possibly an answer to it. It talks about two hundred thousand dollars going to any city that passed a sales tax measure. Could you have, like, multiple cities in one county pass a measure? And all, all be able to access that two hundred thousand dollar, um, pot of money?
You could. You could have that many cities, you could have, in theory, five cities, all the five cities in Amador County, pass a sales tax measure. That qualifies, that is a qualifying sales tax measure. That, that's kind of the difficulty that's come up in the past, is the, what I alluded to, that there are cities who kind of run forward, and that there's a county measure and a city measure, and they, of course, the formula kind of separates out when they're looking at revenue for the county award, how much of your population is, you know, already has a sales tax measure, so then nobody's getting double-counted. It's possible. I would say that as far as, as examining the tax bases involved in the five cities in Amador County, that that's gonna be likely not to generate as much sales tax as needed to make even one particular road program go forward.
But if you get the minimum funding, the two hundred thousand dollars for passing one, a self-help measure.
True, but it comes with a local match requirement for that jurisdiction. So, they've got to come up with the, in the, in the minimum two hundred thousand dollars to do one project, they've got to come up with fifty thousand dollars of local money. And based on those populations of those cities, and we're talking the combined sales tax of all five, that might be some time before they're able.
And, and your numbers were wrong there too, I think. Because, um, the county has about, I think, about sixty-three percent of the sales tax. The cities have about thirty-seven combined.
They were five-year averages, based on CDTFA data.
So, you're doing like, well, then times that number you had by five in?
No, that was the, that was all five of the cities.
You had like three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, I think, for the five cities, that's not correct.
Oh.
It, it's a lot higher than that.
You might want to look at our last newspaper. We only have one newspaper, Ledger Dispatch. There was an article in the City of Ione and expenditures of their SB one dollars. It was a good analysis to show just how many dollars that city gets.
Yeah, because, um, I'd pulled Astonos numbers from the auditor a while back and, um, like in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, um, Amador City had like seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, City Jackson had a, a million and a quarter, City Plymouth had two hundred and thirty seven thousand, Sutter Creek, five hundred and forty thousand, City of Ione was two hundred and eighty three thousand, and, and County Amador is like three point nine million, that allows a one percent. So we had to have those numbers. So it's substantially more.
We may be looking at completely different data, because I was from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, so.
This was, um, see, California Department of Tax and Fee Payments to cities and counties for the one percent broadly burns, local sales and use tax.
I'll get back to you on what.
Like.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, any questions from the public on either one of these topics? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Well, again, I thank you. I appreciate both you and Graham being here.
Thank you for your time.
Very informative.
So we will bring this item back, uh, the resolution for approval, just put it on consent.
Okay, sounds good.
Was there a timeframe on that that needed approval?
No, I talked to Graham. He said there's no timeframe, no time urgency right now.
Okay, cause it was, there was a time, like two, two or three weeks ago, you wanted it passed or supported, um, but, uh, we can wait two weeks to approve it?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, I'm just a guy delivering a message. The, those that wanted it were your fellow supervisors who are officers of CSAC. Um, but yes, there was a, there was a date specific that was connected to some of our conversations around the budget to leverage having the biggest coalition that we could possibly get at that point in time. We're now beyond that, but we are continuing to build a coalition because the work doesn't end, and we want to impact every possible opportunity in the legislature through the rest of the session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I do appreciate the gentleman's, your clarification on the, um, the lim, the, uh, the two hundred thousand dollar pot of money, if you pass a sales tax, that's, that's helpful. Sounds like it might, as long as they can meet the match, they can do it.
Okay, we were going to go on to three B, Rural Counties Representative of California, Presentation Regarding RCRC Strategic Plan and Work Affiliated Entities.
Hi, good morning.
Good. Still morning.
Yeah, still. Yeah, that took a while. Uh, good to see you Supervisor Forster, Supervisor Neto, as always.
I didn't make your last meeting, but they had a special meeting and they needed, they needed a third vote, so I didn't make the annual meeting.
I know. It's all good. Now, this is, uh, this is high level, no, uh, no ask. This is just something we do for, uh, member counties. We go around, just give them high-level presentation, what RCRC is up to, uh, including its affiliate, uh, entities. And, uh, so, you know, Supervisor Forster used to be on the board, um, in fact, used to chair what, two of our affiliates. And Supervisor Neto's been on the board for quite a while now. And I'm thinking most of you've been to the annual conference. You on the board?
Yes, sir.
Um, so just high level, thank you. Um, this is, uh, RCRC's strategic, uh, strategic plan, uh, just, uh, you know, looking at equitable access, uh, you know, with, we, we, with the affiliate entities, we're looking at broadband, housing, health services, uh, the impactful advocacy. And I must also just add, uh, Patrick Blacklock sends his regards, and he's been behind putting this new strategic plan together with, uh, you know, just, uh, his entrance into RCRC over two years ago now, so.
We don't know him as Patrick here.
I know, that's, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Who's Patrick?
Uh, the impactful advocacy, state, federal advocacy, innovative approaches, regulatory engagement, uh, healthy communicate, uh, communities, uh, forest resiliency and wildfire, water resiliency, infrastructure and economic development, and then just the internal operational excellence, including human resources, uh, member services, uh, corporate administration, fiscal health, communication and technology. And just looking at the vision, uh, RCRC looks at ourselves as the premier advocate and innovative service provider for rural counties of California. And, uh, we've enjoyed the, um, the partnership with, um, CSAC. They left. Um, and we've actually gotten a much stronger relationship recently with CSAC, and I think Pat's been doing a really good job with Graham of getting these two entities together and focusing on, on very similar, um, activities. Um, the state policy areas, uh, forest health, wildfire, I'm going to skip over Care Court right now because that's already come up. Uh, but it, it is something, um, our lobbyists and advocates are, are looking at water drought, broadband, housing, energy, social services, and CPUC, we're doing quite a bit of, um, work with them, which I'll touch on a little bit. And then obviously on the federal side, forest, wildfire, water drought, infrastructure, farm bill. I think, um, on the PG&E, uh, I believe, um, Supervisor Brown and Neto were working on something with, uh, John Kennedy and a lobbyist group with PG&E.
Trying to get them to take the large trees.
Yes, yes.
So that they keep leaving on everybody's property.
Right, right. Next slide, please. So one of the affiliates, uh, Golden State Finance Authority, uh, which used to be called Cal Rule, which Supervisor Forster chaired many years ago, uh, we focus on affordable housing. I know we were talking about housing, uh, in the prior presentation. This is more, um, focusing on affordable housing, not homelessness, but, you know, uh, home, potential home buyers who can get credit to qualify for a home, and we focus on the down payment assistance. We focus on those that don't have that money to put down and, um, and that's been the niche since Golden State was formed back in ninety-three. We've put, um, in the state of California, over eighty-five thousand families in homes, uh, over fifteen billion in mortgage financing, uh, over six hundred million in down payment assistance. Uh, you can see for Amador County, um, uh, you know, it's a little different in Amador, uh, less affordable, but, uh, a hundred and sixteen individuals have been put into homes, over eight hundred and sixty-one thousand in down payment assistance provided in Amador County. Uh, the very first presentation was talking about, uh, the PACE program, which Golden State Finance Authority actually ran, uh, until last year when Y-Green, uh, pulled out for many reasons. A lot of it was to do with the legislative changes on residential pace. Uh, we did over, um, a billion in, in, in PACE residential retrofits across the state of California. Uh, so we were the largest PACE provider. And, uh, sorry to see that come to an end. We're focusing a lot more now on, on commercial PACE, and, uh, we're working with, uh, not that Y-Green's out of business, because they're doing a lot of business in Florida and Missouri, because the, 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 the legislating languages in those, uh, states are much easier on residential, but they really took a hiding, and most of the residential PACE programs took a hiding with the changes the state made towards underwriting and, uh, obtaining PACE loans. And there's been a few entities calling us to relook at residential PACE right now. We're, uh, focusing, working with banks, big banks, who are all getting into the commercial PACE, so, uh, we're hoping to see that. And if something good comes around for residential PACE, we're back in and, uh, will, you know, continue our endeavors on that. But, uh, Golden State was, uh, did become the largest provider of, of PACE, including in, in Amador County. Another affiliate entity, National Home Buyers Fund, very similar. Uh, again, Supervisor, uh, Forster chaired this housing entity. It was formed back in two thousand and two. This was to go national to do down payment assistance and, um, has put over forty-four thousand people in homes and, um, you know, over four hundred and fifty million in down payment assistance. If you take Golden State and National Home Buyers Fund, put it together, they financed over twenty-two billion in, in mortgage financing and over a hundred and thirty thousand families, low to moderate income families have been put into homes, uh, with, with down payment assistance. And, um, a relatively new endeavor is to work with, uh, counties and county employees, and to provide, um, more of a specified down payment assistance program for county employees. Uh, not to keep calling on you Supervisor Forster, but I don't know if you remember several years ago that you actually brought this to us saying, we need something for county employees. And so we have now, uh, and two years ago started it, and it's, um, the down payment assistance is structured with, uh, whether it's a second mortgage or a gift or a what have you, with county employees, uh, we're, we're making it a, um, either a second mortgage that's non-repayable, uh, no interest, or it's a gift that's, uh, non-repayable. But, uh, we've seen a bit of an uptick, and I think the idea was, it came, um, from a few of our board members just saying they're, they're trying to keep employees in their counties, and we just need some help with, with, uh, getting them homeownership.
That goes right back to the affordable housing issue.
Right.
And we had a lot of employees who, uh, even making a, a decent wage, um, having a living wage with inflation the way it is, is, is difficult for homeownership.
Yep. And then a, a relatively new entity, Golden State Connect Authority. So we, we've, um, we're focusing on putting broadband into rural California, and it's, uh, it's gigabyte speed fiber, which is the fastest, uh, form of, of internet. Um, we saw, as you all saw, the big issue during COVID where, uh, the kids in rural counties just didn't have any access to internet and didn't have access to schools. And, uh, even before that, we started working with, uh, an investment banking firm as well as, um, who introduced us to this entity out of Utah called Utopia Fiber, which is a government entity and is the largest open access municipality-owned internet provider in the country. And they, they've issued about six hundred million in private debt to fund building, operating, owning fiber and providing an open access to the internet providers. It can be AT&amp;T, it can be Verizon, it could be Monkey Brains, it could be Hoover, but as a consumer of the internet, you get to choose. And you get to cancel subscriptions and re-sign up right away if you're not happy with your subscriber. Uh, Utah Fiber has over fifty-five thousand subscribers now. And, um, we are not internet savvy, so we've, we're using them. They're going to come in and build for us. We're going to own and operate it. We're working with the CPUC. Uh, as you know, there's been several billion that's been federally funded to the state and, uh, and the governor's allocated a lot of it to, uh, broadband. And we've been working with the CPUC to put aside of money into what we're calling a loan loss reserve, and we're going to use that as an insurance fund and then go hit the private capital markets to fund the building and operating, uh, the, the actually putting in the ground. Um, and if for some reason revenues aren't picked up, and the way these bonds work, you, you know, you build in two years of capital, capitalized interest and other your debt service, you know, within three years, you want to see the project revenues working. If it doesn't, that reserve that's put aside by the states or by the federal to the state's money would be used to cover the private investment. Uh, Utah has, as I said, issued over six hundred million, and they have never had a shortfall. They have a slightly different, uh, aspect where, uh, you guys were talking about taxes earlier, where they, uh, their cities and counties use franchise taxes to, as a backstop for their private, um, selling of debt. Obviously, our counties are not, um, most of them are not capable of that, so we've gone to the state and we want to use that as, as a, um, as leverage to the private, um, people out there to, to, uh, invest in, in, in this debt. So that's pretty exciting, and, uh, we've met a lot of headway, and we're hoping, uh, you know, by early twenty twenty-four to be digging in the ground and, uh, you know, county by county, uh, to, to go at it. Um, and then Golden State Finance, we've already gotten, uh, EDA grants, uh, Golden State Finance Authority is funding it upfront for Golden State Connect Authority, and then the reimbursements coming from the counties, um, are, are, are coming back to, to Golden State Finance Authority. Um, I'll jump in next slide unless there's any questions. Uh, one back, sorry. So Rural Alliance, Inc. has been around since ninety-three, too, but has been dormant, and we're, um, revitalizing this. It's a, it's a nonprofit, um, just yet another affiliate of RCRC, and this is going to focus on more of the, um, academic research educational aspects of rural California. Uh, you know, it's been a few months since we've brought it back from the dead, and, you know, the idea is to, to, to bring political legislative, uh, issues to rural California where, you know, we're going to fund tourists, uh, education, um, you just, uh, you know, bringing, bringing the big city people to rural California and showing them what rural California is about is pretty much what, what, um, the idea behind Rural Alliance, Inc. is. And then, um, Golden State Natural Resources, yet another affiliate, uh, started, uh, several years ago, and this, uh, the idea behind this is, uh, forest resiliency and, uh, you know, we've got a, we got into a twenty-year master stewardship agreement with the, uh, US Forest Service, and the idea is go in, clear out the dead wood, and, uh, we're in the, we, we, we're in the works of, um, we've bought two facilities, one in Tuolumne County, one up in, uh, Lassen County, where , uh, the idea is to issue debt, build pellet-making facilities, and then make pellets out of all the dead wood that we're pulling out of the forest. And, um, Europe's a big buyer of this, so is Asia, and it's, uh, we've got a little way to go, but it's, it's in the works, and, um, you know, we're working with a couple of investment bankers, we're working with several entities that have been doing this. Uh, we've been looking at a, you know, other means where do we want to really do it, or bring in those that have done it to, you know, use our stewardship agreement to get them into the forest. And, uh, but the, you know, we, we all know what the, uh, what the fuel behind the fires is, and it's the, it's the, it's the dead wood beneath the forest. And then last but not least is the, uh, Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, and this is, uh, kind of speaks for itself. It really focuses on, um, organic waste and, um, you know, just the environmental side of, you know, again, focusing on rural counties of, of, of California. And, um, that's really just the high level on RCRC as a whole, its affiliate entities. Uh, you know, I didn't want to take too much of your time, but if there's any questions.
Supervisor X?
Well, um, on the, uh, the last thing on the forest management, the, the dead wood, um, is there a plan to, um, develop more biomass capabilities for, uh, dealing with and treating with the biomass, the forest waste, uh, that occur in the, the foothill region and the, and the upper slopes of the Sierra? Because, um, you know, you can make fuels from it, you can, you know, it's, pallets are one thing, you know, that's, that's, that's good use, I'm not going to, but if it's, a lot of times if it's dead wood, it's old wood, it's probably beyond its useful, um, you know, point in time. So it's, uh, it can be consumed, or it can be burned or turned into, to something more useful. What are we doing there? And, you know, it seems like also the airboard has a, a real impact on a lot of this, yet we, we burn off all this material annually. Um, you know, what's our plan? What's, 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 what's the state's plan for doing this?
Uh, and it, it's not, again, we're not, we're not the state, we're a, we're a, um.
I understand that, but.
But we absolutely understand where you, where, uh, your concerns there, and the focus has been pellets. There has been a, a change recently where the, um, our prior CEO, Greg Norton, who you probably have all met, he stayed on to run Golden State Natural Resources, and he has since, uh, as of actually the end of this month, three days, um, retiring from that, and Pat, Patrick's taken that over, and we're taking it internally. And yes, we've been looking at, uh, are we going to keep focusing on pellets, or we're going to just use whatever we can, chips, uh, you know, bring in the Envivers and the Pinnacles and the Drax to come in and help us and just.
The idea is get the wood out. That's the, that's.
Well, it's, it's not just wood. I mean, we, uh, we have programs to keep people from burning pine needles. I mean, there's, there's a lot of that. I mean, you can't, you won't be able to make pellets out of that. Um, you know, there's, you know, branches, you know, brush. We do a lot of brushing. Our county, you know, goes through all the roads and brushes it out. We have our fire safe council. People clear the brush around their, um, around their houses up here. Um, where can they take this? People clear the brush around their around their houses up here. Where can they take this debris to have it, you know, removed? That's all. I'm not I'm not trying to get you to.
I'm telling you right now, we're not.
Have new policies here, but I'm just trying to give you feedback. So maybe.
Absolutely. And it's it's like it's a big state, you know, we're we're going in. And this is the initial process and hopefully it grows. And, you know, we've got the access to the forest where a lot of private companies have tried but couldn't get in. And that was the problem with California as a state. There could be an owl hanging out there and they don't want you to go in and do anything. You know, that's the process we've got to go through. But I think most of the forest is US Forest owned and they they want to see this happen too.
No, I yeah, I get that.
Well, sometimes they want to see it happen, but they don't make it easy sometimes. I had a meeting last week with the regional director of US Forest Service. I'm not going to say his name because I don't think he would appreciate it. But you might want to take it back to RCRC that his thought, and he's more old school than a lot of them, they've always been compelled to try and find value in the timber that's coming off, like the Caldo Fire right now, all the timber coming off. Sure, it has some value, but it's also a liability. And it's a liability if it stays there, but it makes it somewhat unaffordable for some of the entities entities that would take that product if they didn't have to pay so much for it. So if US Forest Service would change their mindset and start looking at it in some cases as more of a liability than a little bit of monetary value that they get off it, then there probably would be a lot more in it, a lot more businesses wanting to take that and do us a favor by taking it.
Well, forest management needs to be subsidized, not pay pay its own way. I think that's.
Right.
The take.
Well, because you either subsidize it in one way or you pay for it with these catastrophic fires and US Forest Service spending millions of dollars on personnel.
Pay on the front end or pay on the back end.
You might want to just take that message back and to try and have those discussions with US Forest Service to change that thinking.
Supervisor Crew? Supervisor Neto?
Oh, I just got to wean a little bit. Some things going in the past doesn't change what's present. But I watched the whole debacle. We used to have a lot of mills around this state that would pay the forest service a hell of a lot of money for the privilege of going in and taking out the wood and cleaning up the forest. And we had the spotted owl debacle and a lot of those mills went away. And now we've got we've got timber you would not believe the quality of it rotting up in those forests. And then we're just talking about the homeless here, not too long going to price to build a house. Yeah, it's water under the bridge, but it's pretty sad.
Well, I thank you, sir, for the presentation. I truly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, wait a second. Any public comment? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
At this time.
One thing I would like to say, though, I would like to thank RCRC for what they've done for small counties over the years. We've been a real, RCRC's been a real powerhouse down down at the state capitol. And you folks done a lot of good work, exceptional work. And it's kind of gave small counties a pretty good little voice. So I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
And I also agree to that. In fact, I just got an email from John Costa from PG&E. If it wasn't for you, gentlemen, I would not have that point of contact to to deal with a problem of dealing with logs. So we're still working on that. And I truly appreciate everything RCRC has done for Amador.
I appreciate the comments. And, you know, we've gone from, I don't know how many counties when you two were board members, but probably 15. We're now at 40. And we now have to stop counties trying to become members of RCRC. We don't want it to get too outside of a rule. But there's a lot of larger counties.
Exactly. Exactly. That's a concern.
Without question. Yeah.
Because that concerns me. If you get too big a counties, too urban counties at some point.
Well, we've got CSAC for that. You know, they cover the whole state and leave it at it.
Yep.
And they're great at it. And we could put good partners with them. But yeah, we're we're definitely in a situation where we're getting calls from Riverside and San Bernardino and what have you wanting to join. And we're like, it doesn't doesn't meet what our, you know, mindset is.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Rural portions, even San Diego, but are they really considered a rural county? But I appreciate you coming up, Craig, and say hello to Patrick.
Will do. Good seeing you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to suspend the board supervisor meeting and take a break for 10 minutes. We'll start with IHSS at 10:45.
Approve agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken, any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County IHSS-PA Board. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for a report of recommendation of possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Anybody on Zoom?
Go ahead, Lorraine, when you're ready.
Hi, good morning Chairman Brown and members of the board. Lorraine D'Amiano with IHSS Public Authority. Thank you for allowing me to present via the phone call today instead of in person. My apologies, I am out of the area due to a death in the family. But I would like to discuss our budget for 2324.
Okay, whoops. Actually, we need to go on to minutes first before we get to you.
Sure.
So.
That item's on the agenda.
What's that?
That item's on the agenda.
Right, and we've approved the agenda, and so now, agenda item minutes, number one.
I think I motion approve as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go on to public county authority budget, 2324. Now please start.
Okay, so just a few bullet points as a reminder. The salaries and all of the services and supplies for public authority is 100% covered by federal and state reimbursement. Amador County, as of today, will be looking at a $47,000 increase in our allocation from state and fed, depending on how the state budget proceeds to move forward. And we are looking at a decrease in our budget request of around $44,000. I also was able to, as with the past three years, for the next three years up through 2026, I've been able to keep our provider health benefit costs the same, so no increase in that area.
Anything else?
No, any questions regarding the budget request?
Any questions from the board? No questions? Well.
Thank you.
Call for a motion?
Move to approve the 2324 budget.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this closes the Amador County IHSS meeting, public authority.
Thank you so much, members of the board. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
You better say in-home supportive services, because we don't want the grand jury looking at acronyms.
That's right, they don't like acronyms.
Who does?
Shot over the bow.
I kind of agree with him.
Okay. Now I'll bring the meeting of the board supervisors back to order, on to 3C. Amendment of Amador County Code, Chapter 2.86, Regarding County General Assistance Program.
Good morning, Ann Watts of Social Services.
Morning.
So today I'm here to recommend some changes to the general assistance program regulations. As you are aware, the general assistance program is a county-run and county-funded program that provides relief and support to indigent adults who do not qualify for any other public assistance programs from our department. In 2016, the board approved changes to the general assistance regulations, however, the changes were not formalized through an amendment to the county ordinance, which is a requirement. Those previously approved changes should be included in the county ordinance at this time. In addition, we are now asking for a few additional changes, which are summarized in the memo that I've provided to all of you. Just briefly, though, these include information regarding the Housing and Disability Advocacy Program, a requirement that the client sign an authorization for reimbursement form if they are applying for social security or veterans disability benefits, streamlining of the job search requirements, clarification regarding in-kind income computations, and procedures for handling skimming or the theft of benefits off of an electronic benefits transfer card. We are recommending waiving the reading of the proposed amendments, and we are also recommending that you schedule the proposed amendments for adoption on the consent agenda at the next scheduled regular meeting.
Thank you. Supervisors?
No.
No.
Presento? Okay. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Anybody out in the boardroom want to talk on this? Okay, back to the board.
I'd move to waive the reading of the proposed amendment to the Amador County Code, Chapter 2.86, Regarding General Assistance Program, including both the 2016, 2023 proposed modifications, as well as the in-kind amounts, so schedule this for adoption on the next board meeting's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the second?
Uh, Frank was. Excuse me Supervisor X. Thank you very much. We are now on to 3D, General Services Administration Discussion Regarding Grant Application for Road Safety Improvements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman.
Morning.
Members of the board. I am Karen Warburton, Senior Administrative Analyst from GSA. I am here today to provide information for the discussion of a grant opportunity called Safe Streets and Roads for All, and also discuss how best to prioritize our roads based on a recommendation from the road committee and requirements for the grant. The Safe Streets and Roads for All grant is being offered by the U.S. Department of Transportation, and it will help, or would help, to fund a project called Keep Amador Roads Safe, or Cars. The project aligns with federal and state trends of minimizing traffic accidents with a goal towards zero fatalities or serious injuries on the roads by examining where safety improvements are needed. Road Committee and County Administration Officer Chuck Eily, via John Hopkins, Director of General Services, recommended four roadways to prioritize. That would be Latrobe, Ridge Road, Shakridge Road, and Fiddletown Roads. The grant requires that county leadership must endorse the goal with a provided resolution that's in your packet, and this is a planning grant that will help the county develop a comprehensive safety action plan. That action plan will be for all the roadways in the county. And there will be a subsequent opportunity, if we were to get this grant, that would allow us to apply for an implementation funding of the suggested actions in the plan. Here's some brief information about the grant, there's a 20% match, which can be county cash contribution, or it can be an in-kind contribution. There is also a minimum of $100,000 for this grant and a maximum award of $10 million. It requires the county to pay expenses in advance and receive reimbursement from the Department of Transportation. The application's due on July 10th, and it would enhance the application if we were to include some stakeholders in the county as part of our application, for example, our cities, if they're willing to do so. All application requests must be data-driven in their nature. So I conducted a brief data analysis that indicates that Latrobe Road and Ridge Road are two roads that have some of the most accidents with fatalities and serious injuries, and therefore I would expect those to bubble up as part of a safety action plan as being roads to be addressed. Yes.
You think you need to add one more wreck on Latrobe Road as of about a couple days ago?
You are correct. The data analysis, though, just to be clear, that I conducted, was over the last five years, and 2022 data is not out yet, so it was for the period of 2017 to 2021. However, the dangers of the road are not lost on me, and they still exist.
Not really the danger of the road, it's the danger of the drivers, because my daughter got the accident two months ago, somebody crossed over the line and hit her head on.
Yes, it definitely, it definitely has to do with the drivers, but we, there are probably some improvements to the roads that we can make that would prevent people from making those mistakes.
Agreed. That and getting more sleep.
Yes. There are some additional statistics that I included in the memo for you to read, if you want, if you prefer to read those things. I also want you to be aware that I have already reached out to a number of individuals for letters of support on this grant, and I think we're going to get a pretty, pretty good amount of support from high-level individuals like our senator, our state senators at the federal level, Congressman Tom McClintock, and Caltrans Director for the state, so there will be a number of those.
Would you like some other, like Chamber of Commerce, Vintners, those type of organizations send letters to, or not? If that'd be helpful?
I think anybody who can support us would be helpful. I, I, I'm somewhat careful about how I proceed with letters of support, because otherwise, if we ask them for, every time we would apply for a grant, we would end up having to ask them for a lot of letters, I think. So I'm somewhat careful about that, but I wouldn't turn them away. In the situation where we might be asking cities to be co-applicants on the application, those cities would be a good source for letters of support.
But if we're asking the cities, you know, if they, they don't see a benefit to themselves, because all the roads you've mentioned tend to be, unless, you know, if we're including the section of Ridge Road within the city of Sutter Creek, would they, why would they sign on?
To help the residents?
So John Hopkins, General Services, the action plan that, and grant that she's talking about covers county, countywide, so to have the city's support is important. The second issue or topic on the agenda is to have a focus for staff and for the board to identify for these four roads, for us to focus on for other opportunities, not just this opportunity.
Thank you.
Does that help that clarification?
But some of the other roads don't run within the jurisdictional boundaries of any of the cities, so I don't know. Yeah, I, I think they'd probably be nice about it, but at least part of Ridge Road does go through parts of Sutter Creek.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people, you know, using Latrobe that are out of the cities and, you know.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it'd be a countywide benefit of, you know, that, that road.
It is, and everybody that lives in those urban areas or city areas use those county roads at some point.
Right.
They leave those cities, so to have the city's support, I think, would be important if the board chooses to go forward with this, this, this opportunity.
Who made the selection of the four roads? Was it done looking at data, or what?
I think just, you know, knowledge of the area and kind of where things happen in the county.
But who made the recommendations?
The recommendation came out of the road committee, so.
Who's on the road committee? Yeah, that's interesting, they're all up-country for the most part.
They do keep, well Ridge Road is, and Latrobe are not up-country.
Well, they're higher than my district, I know that, so.
You meant to say they're not District 2?
Yeah, you might as well say that, but formerly District 2, the one I could find there would be Stony Creek Road, that I think would be one that, there's been a lot of accidents on that road and should be in there for consideration, too.
Well, to be clear, the safety action plan itself would look at every road in the county and provide suggestions for every road that has those safety issues.
Well, my voice wasn't there, I would put Stony Creek in there to look at strongly in the future, and that's not even in my district anymore, so.
Noted.
So John Gedney's also here and is familiar with this, if you guys want to hear from him, too, because we had reached out to him weeks ago to make sure that we weren't in conflict with what ACTC was doing. If you do choose to move forward, too, I, I am going to emphasize that we're going to need cooperation from, from public works, because we need data and information, and the challenge with this is that range of funds from 100,000 to 10 million, and trying to decide what you're going to raise your hand for. Karen's done some work on that, too, you can, you can talk about the, you reached out.
Yes, I, Yuba County received this grant for the safety action plan portion of the grant for the 2022 fiscal year, so I contacted them and talked to them about how they, you know, what they did and how they proceeded. They, too, partnered with a neighboring county for sections of that county, and the cities in their, in their county. And they request, they had requested $1 million with a $200,000 match to conduct their safety action plan.
As Latrobe goes, you know, that runs in between El Dorado and us, have you contacted El Dorado to see?
I have, but I have not heard back.
Okay, so at least we're, we're stepping in that direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because, well, just for example, in the past, I know at Running Gold on Ridge, Ridge Road, there's a lot of accidents that occurred there, and there was an application by Jared in the past to put in a term pocket there, and that was on the order of about 700 to 800,000 dollars, so, you know, that's kind of the scope or the size of some of these projects you're looking at, so you almost have to multiply that by four if there's four roads, so about.
Implementation.
Between three and, three and, you know, ultimately between three and four million, yeah.
The, the implementation portion of this grant goes up to 25 million dollars, so that, we would be looking at a different dollar amount at that point.
Okay. Just a reminder, this is just the study portion.
This is just a study, this is not actually putting asphalt on the ground.
This is not actually, but this has to be done in order to get access to that second phase.
And this, this is one opportunity, I had coffee with Graham Canouse this morning before our meeting, and our, their grants person was there, who lives in Sutter Creek, Paul, I think is his name, and they indicated they're working with an outside company, and the first to sign up was Imperial County that is paying 250,000 to work with this person. Well, I told them, we already have, now that we've approved consent, three people that are working on grants, you Karen, and then the other two, and OES grants, but he indicated probably for about 50,000, we could contact with this company, but it would be the sole purpose of them in Washington identifying opportunities for us, not doing the paperwork, but identifying those opportunities, so.
We talked to them, didn't we? And we was looking at more than 50,000.
Well, what they indicate now is if it's just to identify those opportunities, it'd be about 50.
Well, Karen's pretty good about identifying stuff.
Now, but she's not in Washington either.
So Supervisor Brown, you mentioned getting, I just heard the comment asphalt on, on the road. This may or may not put asphalt on a road, it's to improve the safety functions of it, but it very well could as well. Obviously, we're going to try to do that.
Right.
And Supervisor Forrester, when you mentioned Stony Creek Road, just for the, the road committees, I don't know what they were thinking, but I know when I was looking at roads, we were also looking at roads that were the heaviest traveled, is, is why I think Latrobe and Ridge came, came up to that, as well as those roads statistically that have the greatest number of accidents and fatalities.
Well, Stony Creek has its share of accidents, it is heavily traveled, probably not as much as those, but I do know what the roads committee was thinking.
You're clairvoyant, I'm impressed.
I'll leave it, there's a lot of shots over the bows here. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, any from the public?
John, you good, you got any comments on this?
No? Okay.
They're not giving it to Pine Grove, we hadn't anything to.
Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Oh, we're having fun today.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr.?
I am, sir.
All right, I make a motion to authorize staff to apply for the SS4HA grant and approve the attached resolution.
4HA, SS4A?
SS4A.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, 4H.
You're having me all confused there, Frank.
4A. I take that back, yeah, SS4A.
Do we have a second?
Our second again.
Oh, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, I apologize. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess I.
Okay. And that passes, thank you very much, appreciate it Karen. Okay, 3E, General Services Administration Dispense With Formal RFP Procedures and Approve An Endendum to Agreement with the Annual Audit Services for Additional Three Years, Suggested Action, Discussion of Possible Action to Consider.
That was a long title, sorry about that. Think about that until I hear you guys say it all together once. Hi, Danielle Whitaker from General Services. I'm here today to review and discuss the potential request to dispense of the formal RFP procedures for the auditing service as requires your direction in action. Our policy states that a contract should not exceed 36 months, and this addendum will extend this particular contract for three additional years for a total of nine years, with a total contract amount of $616,533. Historically, when I'm requesting to dispense of the formal RFP procedures, I'm solid in my argument, and when looking at the reasons for extending this contract, as I state in my memo, I can find arguments either way for this item. So with the history that led to our policy, the length of time and the amount of this contract, I wanted to inform the board and have discussions on how you would like to proceed, and Tacey and John are here to answer any questions you have.
I liked your analysis that you didn't agree with the auditor 100%.
Well, it's not, it's, the analysis is objective, right?
Objective, that's right, and it's using the, the items that you have to analyze when you're looking at this, and you did find one area in particular that you agreed with them on.
Correct.
So at this time, because of the, the issue here surrounding what led to changes in policies back in 2014, the amount of this, the contract time, it's really up to you guys to decide what you want to do. Tacey's here and may have some additional information that wasn't in her, in her, in her memo to us, but it requires your attention here to decide what you really want to do. Tacey, you have, you want to come up?
Yeah, I guess one question I have, too, is they're looking at 3.8% and 3% and 3%. I would think when they first take this contract, to get up to speed, would probably take them a fair bit of time and effort. Once they've done it for a number of years, I think they should probably be fairly familiar with it, and their, their costs should probably drop. I understand cost, and everything's going up, but as far as their manpower, labor, should go, I think would come down substantially.
Well, when I looked, I, I actually looked at that with Danielle, and when I look at that over the period of time, remember that in the last two years, the CPI has increased 14%. So that's where some of this is, some of those costs are coming at. So the original contract was at 3.3 and 2, this one's at 3.8, 3.3, it seemed reasonable, and I think Danielle made that analysis there as far as cost goes, when you look at the CPI in the last two years.
It was 14%, huh?
14%. Just to ask, well, if Ann was here, you could.
I knew it was high, I knew it was quite that high.
You could see what the rent increase was for the Health and Human Services building.
I thought that that was a compelling argument, though, that the software, all of the increased software requirements, and having a firm that's aware of that and not have to come up to speed on that is a pretty compelling factor. have to come up to speed on that is a pretty compelling factor.
It really was extremely important, and last year it did take some time. Took time for us to get familiar, it took time for Smith and Newell to get familiar and to be able to go into the system and review contracts as well, review journal entries, and then that software, you can extract the detailed footnotes that GASB requires. And so that was for GASB 87, and we are in the same exact boat with GASB 96, which is a hook-on to 87. And it has, I thought maybe it would be easier, because we had gone through this process gathering all of our leases last year, but getting a hold of all of our software contracts has been very difficult. And we just were made aware of a new interpretation of the GASB 96, and we are, we already have over 70 contracts to renew, and we are expecting to have over 100 again. And so this software's critical, and their knowledge and ability to use it is critical. They are also on a separate situation, you know, we are still undergoing audits of our ARPA expenditures. Yes, we got the money last year and the year before, but we are audited on the uses. And so they are very familiar with how we have spent our ARPA monies and the processes we've gone through, and I think that's important, because that's over 7.7 million. But I also wanted to say, just in general, that it's kind of, it's typical process in the auditing profession to have procure, have, retain auditing firms for multiple years. The national average is 10 years. The GFPA, which is very conservative, states that you should retain an audit firm for a minimum of five years, a minimum, and they are very conservative. There's a lot of reasons, but it is a major undertaking to change audit firms. Just some local facts, the audit firm that we had before, Smith and Newell, the county retained for 14 years. Calaveras County had retained Smith and Newell for 10 years, and Mariposa has continued, they have used Smith and Newell since 2007. So it is industry practice to retain them. Our plan would be to go out, these are the, there are other GASBs coming along, of course. They are nothing substantial and require, you know, us to work with multiple departments and special software to implement those standards. So right now is a crucial time for us, and we would appreciate your thoughts.
I think you made, I think you made your case.
Okay.
You know what the old saying is, you're winning?
Well, you know, I know all the players, there's not that many. Sometimes I don't necessarily like what Smith and Newell says or what they want us to do, but looking at and understanding what I've heard from my peers, we've got the best team right now. I'm very confident in that.
So Supervisors.
John, this checks, this meets all the, the cross your Ts and dot your Is needed for contractual purposes to extend their contract.
What I was going to add to that is you'd mentioned the software, which is an effective argument. When we look at that, we understand the time that it creates to mow up on something like that, to have that training. My understanding from Smith and Newell is that works only if they've kept their same staff, because you know, as organizations change, then somebody might not be familiar with that software. My understanding is they're solid with that, they're still working with the same folks. It does cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. It's not to say, though, this has a similar pattern to it, not a pattern, I shouldn't say, but a similarity to some of the protests that we received in 2014. Now, three or two of the board members weren't here at that time, I think, to experience some of that. That's why I'm cautious with this in saying you could have an argument for it or an argument against it. When we did the original RFP for this, I believe, Danielle, correct me, but we had five, one dropped off because they didn't submit timely, one. But there was a little contentious arguing over who should get this contract. Even if you proceed today and award to, another three years to Smith and Newell, it doesn't mean that you won't get a protest. We're not aware of any of the other firms that are saying that they've got an interest there, so that's good. So I think the board's in pretty good shape, and you have the lawful right to move forward as well. There's no illegal thing here, right?
Any questions, Supervisor X?
Nope.
Crew?
Nope.
Resonado? Well, do we have any public comment? Any Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Back to the board.
I'd make a motion to dispense with the formal RFP procedures and approve the Second Amendment with Smith and Newell CPAs for an additional three years of service in an amount not to exceed $223,925.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, a couple people have been waiting in the back of the room for a while, now it's your turn. Presentation of the report by the 2022-2023 Amador County jury, grand juries. Morning, morning. Why don't you go ahead and swap over to the other one over here?
Okay. You think it's a little lower?
Yeah, it's a little lower, and I can see you.
All right.
There you go. You can't hide behind the post.
I'm Susan Manning, and this is Taylor Reader. We were both pleased to be part of the civil grand jury this past year, and I'm just going to read to you the press release. We found the process to be very interesting and rewarding, and we think that we have given you practical and positive recommendations from our findings. Each year, the civil grand jurors, who are hard-working volunteers, are charged with the watchdog function of our local government and to investigate complaints and concerns about government operations. This civil grand jury investigated the required areas assigned to every grand jury, which includes the prison, jail, and the youth camp. In the jail report, the need for a mission is discussed to guide county operations for the benefit of Amador County residents and to ensure excellent standards and planning are met for future projects. The Ione City Administration was investigated and determined to need improvement in procedures to assure resident complaints are heard and procedures followed to guide operations. Veteran Services was found to have incorrect contact information in both local phone books, and it is recommended that these services for our veterans be promoted. Mental Health Services reveals that Amador County has the second-highest suicide rate in the state of California. This statistic, the grand jury recommends, be further investigated. These are only a few of the facts and recommendations being revealed by the Amador County Civil Grand Jury. The entire final report may be reviewed online at amadorcourt.org or in hard copy at the Amador County Chamber of Commerce and at the Amador County Library.
Well, I thank you. I had one of your members give me a Terry Sanders brochure, I mean, placard that you guys, and I hung it up in Barley Place, so at least.
Thank you.
That was at least done.
Yes.
For you and for your part of the grand jury, so I appreciate it.
He provides an invaluable service, and I was really surprised how many veterans did not know about his service, so anything we can do to promote that service is really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from the board?
Well, I'd just say I do agree with the acronym thing, it can be very frustrating sometimes. You know, you see, you know, there's all these different ones, and you look through some of these documents, and you can't find them, whether it's federal, state, maybe county a little bit. I would say overall, I think the grand jury report this year is probably very straightforward, and looking at the facts, and I appreciate that, because there's been some grand jury reports in the past that I think were rather political or slanted, I don't know quite how to say it correctly, but I think you did your job, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, the one thing I can add on to acronyms is I know through the Air Force, all the years that I was in there, that you had to have an, we're always using acronyms, but at least at the beginning of the letter, you know, it was explained out what that acronym went, gave the rest of the letter, it had to, you know, put into it, but at least the very first paragraph was, you know, you expanded it of what that acronym stands for, it was like, Tacy was talking about GASB, it took me a second to remember what the GASB meant, but I thank you.
I'd like to make one comment on the jail portion. I believe, I know that it's hard to understand what happened over the years, and in 2007, when it said the board got that $22.7 million grant, we did get a $22.7 million grant, and it said, however, the county ultimately determined it could not contribute the matching funds and therefore had to return the grant. We could have contributed the matching funds. The reason we turned it back is because the state was changing their rules on people being convicted and then sentenced, so the sentencing rules changed, people were not going to jail en masse like they were in the past, and we did not need 166-bed jail anymore. It would have doubled our staffing costs from four to eight million, so that's the reason we didn't take the grant. The sentencing rules changed in the state, we didn't need 166-bed jail. And I got to thank Sheriff Martin Ryan at the time, because it was a hard decision to return $22 million to the state.
I think also, if we went forward, it would have probably, for all intents and purposes, pretty much broke the county.
That's correct, and the other thing I need to say, too, is the state required at that time is if you build 166-bed jail, you have to staff it for 166 beds, whether it's full or not.
That was the big issue.
It made no sense.
Would the board like to appoint an ad hoc committee to formulate a response, or how do you want to go about responding?
Usually the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, usually.
Okay. So, okay with it?
Okay.
But I do appreciate all the hard work of the civil grand jury. The acronym thing wasn't a low blow, it was just, it's like when you get appointed to Amador County Transportation Commission, I had to have a whole sheet to refer to just to understand what was going on.
Well, I think I've been out of it for a long time. I was a risk director, and the workers' comp people have their own language, and then when you jump back into Mental Health Services and you look through all of it, you go, whoa, I had to keep going back, and the documents were very long, so it really made me think, wow, if you want somebody to read the document, you need to leave all that out of there.
If you give us a test on it, we might get 50%.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 3G, review and possible approval of the June 13th Board Supervisor Meeting minutes.
Any corrections?
Yeah, I saw one in there.
I have some.
Okay.
Page four, it says LaNelle Project, as far as AW, I think that should be LaNelle Heights, maybe?
I have minor corrections, too.
Make a motion with those corrections to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0, this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, July 11th at 9 o'clock. Close session begins at 8:30.